And remind folks that they can turn on closed caption at any time. So Chair, when you are ready, we can get started.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Bernard Green, Chair of the Brookline Select Board, and this is the Select Boards meeting for Tuesday, June 6, 2023. We're going to start off with announcements and updates from the Select Board. I'd like to take advantage of the privilege of being Chair to to start with a little statement. A wonderful singer who did so much for women and so many other people, Tina Turner, died in May. Her younger years were painful to learn about because of the abuse of her husband, Ike Turner. They made great music together, but the abuse she suffered is unimaginable. For me, the most painful part of the story is that when she finally found the courage to get out of that relationship, she was so broken that she gave Ike Turner everything she had. Her money, the rights to her songbook, everything. She just wanted to get away. Of course, she was able to recover very quickly and became widely loved and admired and a superstar of rock and roll. Now, why am I mentioning this? Her story and how women get out of relationships that are abusive and end up with nothing is not uncommon, even here in Brookline. Fortunately, in Brookline, we have a very active domestic violence roundtable that brings police, schools, courts, and other bodies together to discuss issues that come up and brainstorm solutions for women and sometimes men who suffer domestic abuse or other types of abuse. One member of the Brookline Roundtable is Doreen Gallagher, who has worked with the Police Department as liaison to the courts, has provided critical education to students in the school and how to deal with domestic violence, bullying, and how to talk about abuse that students see. The Roundtable is having an important meeting this Thursday, June 8, at 11:30 a.m. in the Community Room of the Public Safety Building. Members of the Select Board are invited to this important event to learn about the work of the Domestic Violence Roundtable and to discuss with the members some of the things that it is doing. So, the Select Board is invited Thursday, 11:30 at the Community Room in the Public Safety Building. Thank you. Marian, did you have your hand up?
Yes. So the Select Board received an email this week from an eighth grade student at Lincoln School by the name of Jonathan Traub. And he is working on his capstone project, and part of what he's doing is spreading awareness about antisemitism. And so he asked us, as a Select Board, to bring this up at our next meeting, so I am doing just that. And I have a few things to say. I said certainly there are a few Jewish members of the Select Board. If you don't know that I'm Jewish, my last name Ashkenazi literally means European Jew, like literally. And I think it's a really important topic. I think we really always have to be aware. We always have to be having these conversations. We always have to be standing up for our neighbors. And I also think it's really important to encourage our young K through eight and high school kids to be involved in politics, to do this work. So I really appreciate Jonathan bringing that and asking us to speak about it.
Thank you, Marian. Anyone else? Okay. Public comment. John, do you want to start us off?
Yes, thank you very much. And public comment is an opportunity for us to hear the public's perspective on issues in Brookline that matter to you. There are a few rules for this. Each person speaking tonight is limited to three minutes. You don't need to use the entire time, but you may if you'd like. We encourage you to refrain from personal attacks and from addressing personnel issues. Members of the public sometimes raise questions during public comment. We may be able to provide a quick answer, but are more likely to work with staff to get more thorough answers and to respond over email. We'll let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining, and when your time is up, please conclude your remarks at that time. And if you have more to say, you're welcome to send an email to board members expressing your thoughts in greater detail. And Devin, who is first on the list?
The first person signed up for a public comment is Michael Rubenstein. You've been promoted to a panelist, and your three minutes will begin when you're ready.
Thank you very much. Thank you, members of the Select Board, for this opportunity to speak. My name is Michael Rubenstein, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 13. I'm speaking today as a member of the public observing progress to date by the Select Board MBTACA Multifamily Permitting Committee. Before I begin, I want to lay a little groundwork regarding housing capacity. Number one, theoretical capacity is the number of units that could be built on a parcel if it were empty. The state office that regulates the MBTACA uses theoretical capacity to determine compliance. Number two, incremental capacity subtracts the floor area of what is already built from the theoretical capacity. And number three, practical capacity further reduces incremental capacity by incorporating economics of building new units. For example, consider a parcel that allows four stories, but already contains a two-story commercial building. Despite the incremental capacity to build two more floors, if building isn't profitable, then the parcel's practical capacity is zero. Now, the Select Board Committee appears to be developing a solution to MBTACA compliance with two components. The first component is to remove special permits on enough multifamily zones to meet the MBTACA theoretical capacity requirement without necessarily incentivizing housing in these zones, or at least not the 699 housing units charged by the Select Board. The second component is to rezone areas with practical capacity without meeting MBTACA guidelines in those areas. Yet, if we eliminate special permits in multifamily zones, we still want predictable outcomes for future changes made to such parcels and their buildings. Twenty-two parcels in M Zones contain at least one commercial enterprise. Just like on Harvard Street, we don't want to jeopardize existing retail in these parcels. Even if parcels have no theoretical capacity, allowing building as of right would also allow changes to the form, surface, parking, or other considerations that, without clear regulations, ignore neighborhood standards. And in summary, building a compliant zoning district from any existing multifamily parcels requires community engagement, just like the Harvard Street zoning proposal. Unfortunately, we don't have the time and resources to have a process on these parcels and still meet our MBTACA compliance deadline. I look forward to lifting up additional concerns and acknowledging how they might be addressed in future public comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, there are fourteen attendees. And no one has used the hand raise or Q and A feature to indicate they'd like to make a comment.
Okay, thank you. Next, let's go to our miscellaneous calendar. We have three, I think, three items. Yes, question of approving authorization to hire request for Assistant Director for Community Planning in the Planning Department. Question of approving a change order for a contract with respect to the Driscoll School project and a question of approving a contract amendment to add to the construction administration services related to the high school project. The second item is $297,327.20. That's Driscoll School project. And the third item is $16,410. Any questions or discussion regarding those three items? Seeing none, I move approval of items 3A, 3B, and 3C. And by the way, later on, we're going to have a discussion of board procedures, and I'm going to just make the executive decision of changing how I address people on the Select Board. From your first names to Mr. or Ms., whatever. Okay, we'll discuss this more later. I think I should probably start this now.
That means you have to learn how to say my last name.
I know, and that's going to be, well, not hard, but it will be a challenge, and I will take that challenge up. And Mr. Van Skoyek's name is not always easy either.
It isn't.
Okay, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye, Mr. Van Skoyek.
Aye.
Ms. Ashkenazi.
Aye.
Mr. Sandman.
Pretty good on Ashkenazi.
Mr. Warren.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you. Next, our main calendar. First of all, Washington Street Drainage Easement. Question of accepting and authorizing the Chair to execute the drainage easement at 55 Bartlett Crescent, which was authorized by a town meeting vote on November 2022. 2022. Any questions? Or Mr. Carey, would you like to give any background, or is this fairly straightforward?
I think this is fairly self-explanatory coming out of the town meeting, from the special town meeting of last year. I see Ms. Ashkenazi has her hand up.
Okay, yes.
We got an odd email today. Was that related to this? There was no context. Did I, did other people get that email? No. All right, I'll send it to you, Chaz, then.
Okay.
And is regarding this item?
I mean, I thought so. I didn't realize others didn't get it. Dan Bennett got it. Oh, Heather got it. Well, that.
Neil Washinsky.
I'm sending it to you now, Chaz. I don't, I didn't honestly have, I thought it was referring to this, but okay, now I.
Okay.
I'll take a look.
Okay. Seeing no questions, I move approval of the Washington Street Drainage Easement. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Mr. Van Skoyek.
Aye.
Ms. Ashkenazi.
Aye.
Mr. Sandman. It sounded like an aye, but you're muted. Or it looked like an aye. I have to get you on the record.
Sorry, are you speaking to me?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said aye, I think.
Okay. Mr. Warren.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Next, a reserve fund transfer. Question of approving and transmitting to the Advisory Committee the following reserve fund transfer request. Building Department in the amount of $743,000 from the reserve fund to school building utilities and library for utilities. Any discussion or question? I see Mr. Simmons is here. Do you want to add anything to this?
Charlie can add background if you'd like to. I have a few notes if you'd like to hear them, but it looks like Paul might have a question.
Yeah, it's fairly straightforward unless anyone has a question. I see Mr. Warren has a question.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Green. Yeah, my question was just, do we feel like we, I guess because last year was a partial year on some of the new buildings, I think, there was a note in there that the school buildings are being used more. Although we've always been back, I'm not sure what "used more" means. And do we think we're reaching a level of stability on being able to forecast and budgeting for these items?
Sure. So a couple of things. So there are a number of issues that went into the deficit that we saw this year, and some of them are to do with, some of them are to do with the additions to the building footprint. But what I want to point out is, you know, actually, you know what, Paul, let me just run through my points on this, because I think they might, I think they might answer some of the questions, and it might be easier than starting with questions, but you know, I wasn't sure how much you folks would want to delve into this. It's actually quite complex this year. There's a lot going into what's causing the deficit. So let me just set the stage. Last year, we asked for a reserve fund transfer of around $450,000 for school utilities. This year, we're coming back with a reserve fund transfer request of $743,000, which is obviously an escalation of $300,000, right? Have a couple of spreadsheets. I'll very quickly show them. So first is the reserve fund transfer sheet that we looked at last week. I presented a few reserve fund transfers. Those were approved by Select Board and AC. Now, we are back to talk about these two, or building and library utilities. Approval of those would lead to a balance of $1.5 million in the reserve fund. And then, in a few weeks, we'll be back to talk about a fire overtime transfer, which is down $300,000 from 825 to 525 after some reviews with the chief. We have more in salary savings than we thought. This is all good news. The thing I want to point to, and let me just make sure that I'm sharing the correct, did my screen change? Okay, here is your, here is your reserve fund transfer request for this year, which is $364,000 for electric, $322,000 for natural gas, and $57,000 for water. There are a lot of things going into these numbers. First of all, electricity is actually down across school buildings. That means that this large deficit we're facing of $364,000 is almost entirely due to cost. The cost of electricity went up about five cents per kilowatt hour this year. And that's, and it's actually six or seven cents per kilowatt hour compared to what we had budgeted for, for FY '23. So, you know, there were some increases here and there for electricity, but for the most part, it's cost. On the natural gas side, you saw in my memo that gas usage is up significantly, and we've pinpointed those, the buildings that are really causing that to be the PhysEd slash pool complex and the high school. The PhysEd slash pool complex is using almost double what it was last year. And so that brings us to water, which is over this year, we suspect, due to the very hot and dry summer we had, the same thing that Parks saw. You'll notice a trend that several departments, you know, we talked about fire utilities, that has fallen off. We found a way to cover that. Fire and library both had electricity that was high, as did a couple of DPW divisions, or as did DPW. So water is high for similar reasons as other departments, and that leaves us with this gaping number. A few other things. 22 Tappan, as you noted, Paul, was only online for five months in the prior year. It's now online for the full 12. That's partly why we're seeing a deficit, we think. The building is also operating at 100K per year more for electricity and 20K more for gas than we had initially estimated with our engineers. So if you think about a $450,000 reserve fund transfer, add on that 120,000 for the, you know, the difference in costs to run 22 Tappan, you're almost at the reserve fund transfer that we're looking for this year. I'll note that the budget was basically level funded between '22 and '23. So that can help to explain why we're looking at a similar number plus the issues that happened. So these bills right here are based on a three-year average, what we think a bill would look like at the end of this year. It's one bill for electricity, no bills for natural gas, actually, that's all of the bills are in, and two bills for water. So to answer the question, Paul, that you really asked, do we have the money to fund this in future years? At the last Select Board meeting, I mentioned that there is a question of how do you fund this large gap? And if I didn't mention it, it's like what I mentioned at AC, that we did notice a million dollars in group health savings this year. 400,000 of that went to the town and went to the, to funding the fire contract in future years. That means the school is looking at potentially 600,000 in group health savings that could be applied to utilities. Now, if we look at next year, I've done an assessment basically six months ago for the FY '24 budget and up with a budget number using the prior three years' data. That's as much as we usually have in November when we're making the budget. Now, I have this year's data as well, and if you factor this year's data in, this high number of 743,000 over into the three-year averages we use, I'm estimating that it's a gap of around 480,000. Now, to make matters worse, and I mentioned this in my, I believe I mentioned this in my memo, if not, I might have described it last week. The Driscoll School is now expected to come online without its geothermal plant. And that, according to our engineer, is going to increase costs to operate that building by around 200K. So if you take that 480K gap that I imagine could be there, if you use the current year data, which we normally do not do, by the way, we normally do not do that in our budgeting, because we don't have that data in November, December, when we're putting together the budget. If we factor that in, you see a gap of 480K, you factor in the 200K to operate Driscoll without a geothermal plant, it's 680K. That means that we need the schools to apply all of that group health savings to utilities, and you'd see a gap of 80,000 or so that we might be back for next year. So as to the question of do we have the funds in the budget to support this next year, I believe that we need to seriously think about using the group health funds to support this budget. And I think it's, I think it's an imperative, because otherwise, we may be back here with the same request next year. And I have some thoughts about how we can better budget utilities going forward, but maybe I will let you guys react and ask questions. You're all of you reacting, ask questions, pardon. Do you want to choose someone? I don't know who could jump in. Do you want to go back to Paul?
Chair, you're on mute.
Wait, hold on. My mute button went off. Before we ask, before I call on Mr. Skoyek, could you, something you said sort of popped out at me, and that is the the geothermal is not going to be up and running. Is that just because it takes time to get it finally finished, or is there a problem with that?
I'll throw that Charlie, but I believe that it's not in, not going to be in place at the time the building opens.
Yes. In order for the geothermal wells to be, the fields to be made, the old Driscoll School needs to be torn down. So the staff and children, we need to move out of the old building, go into the new building, then the contractor will begin the demolishing of the old building, and then they'll build that field. So that's going to take several months through the winter into the spring. Then geothermal using that wells will be activated.
Okay, maybe everyone else knew that, but I didn't. Ms. Ashkenazi, let me go to Mr. Van Skoyek.
I was just going to directly speak to your question about the wells. That was always the plan.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Skoyek.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm very encouraged, actually, by the, especially the last part of Charlie's presentation. And let me say Mr. Young's presentation. And in part because, in large part because he got to the core question, as I see it, which is why would we budget less than we think we're going to need? And isn't it somewhat more knowable than you would think from what has happened the last two years? Isn't it actually somewhat more knowable than, than our experience has indicated as to, you know, how to estimate going forward utility costs in any given year? I mean, you know, to state a couple of obvious points, you know, as Charlie said, you can average out, you know, the prior three years. You can average out, you know, inflation in various costs. You can pray that the weather is kind of, you know, like it was on average for the past three years. Sometimes it is, sometimes it's not. But you ought to be able to do a lot better than to end up with a shortfall of 700 and some odd thousand dollars at the end of a given year in what you have budgeted for utilities. So it strikes me that, for whatever reason, we've been knowingly under budgeting for utilities. Now, it sounds like we're going to try to get more on target. At some point, but not immediately, Charlie or Mr. Young, I'd like you to address why we would go to the group health account and what the implications of that are to make up the difference in what we actually need to put into these utility budgets. But the other point I wish to make is that I think that it's going to become increasingly important to, I'm going to use the word dashboard, the actual use experience of our various buildings when it comes to gas and electricity. So I think we should be having a discussion in future years, and maybe even later this coming fiscal year, on the real experience of our buildings in terms of how much gas they're using, how much electricity they're using, and how do they compare to one another in terms of energy efficiency? How do they compare to our goals in terms of energy efficiency? So I think we're, we need to deal with much more than just, did we put aside enough money to cover the costs of the utilities this year? We need to break down how we are using electricity and gas and water, you know, across all of our buildings. By the way, I was pleasantly surprised to find out the other day that we have 91 buildings. That's a lot of buildings. And variations in them will tell us if some of them are not performing up to expectations, and if some of our newer buildings are not performing up to expectations, we need to know why, and we need to do something about it. So that's why I think we do need to dashboard going forward. And thank you for allowing me to make these comments.
Okay. You want to respond, Mr. Young?
Sure, really quickly. So a couple of weeks ago, we had a conversation about how to fund the fire contract going forward. And one of the sources of funding that Chaz and Melissa and I identified is this pot of group health savings that we've identified. So group health costs were projected to go up by 8% this year, and in many cases, plans did go up by that much. However, due to a shifting of the plans that the GIC carries and the shifting of our employees into different plans as a result of them dropping one plan and adding another plan, resulted in a savings to the town and the schools of about a million dollars. So we took 400,000 of that savings that we're seeing, that's, you know, out there, we're not expected to need it in '24, and applied that to the fire contract going forward, and there's a $600,000 amount that flows through, on the, you know, on the other side of the town-school split from that 1 million that could, in this case, be applied to utilities. And I would very much recommend that we do that. You know, a couple of things about that. Some people, you know, usually we don't rely on FY '23 data for FY '24 energy. When I talk about improving how we forecast energy, I'm thinking about ways we might still be able to do that, using maybe the first couple of months of the year. And we also, you know, wouldn't necessarily like to build into the budget, you know, the odd behavior of the geothermal plant not being operational. You know, that's not necessarily normal use, but given that 22 Tappan has been more expensive to operate than we thought, it's probably wise to have extra in there anyway. So I recommend the full 600,000 of that savings go to utilities. Anyway.
Mr. Sandman, and by the way, Mr. Warren, your hand is still up. Did you have something?
I had a follow-up from my prior question.
Can you wait for?
Sure.
Sam, yeah.
Thanks. So the question I have is, I think that John appropriately asked a sort of a high-level question. I have a low-level question. The, and the question is, the healthcare benefits are carried on the town side of the budget, or the unallocated side of the budget, and then they're split based on actual or close to actual experience. So is that also the case with utilities? We allocating back from a single pool, or is the utility budget for the school separately held within the, within the school budget?
Good question. So the, the cost of the school building's utilities is budgeted for within the building department. But the amount that is specifically forced, and the building department pays it, you know, the town building department pays it. But that amount flows through the town-school split. So it's, so it's budgeted for on the school, on the town side, but we reallocate it over to the town-school split.
Okay, it's allocated based on actual or close to actual experience with the.
It's allocated based on the budget, and then, I mean, yes. I mean, it can't say actual, right? Because here I am asking for a reserve fund transfer, right? But, but the budget for it flows through the town-school split.
Mr. Warren?
Thank you. So appreciate digging into the details, Charlie, Mr. Young, Charlie Young. My. You guys are going to make my head spin with all these changes. But I wanted to say, I'm less concerned about the accounting. I'm sure you have a handle on that. I'm more concerned about the risk within our planning and our forecasting. So I heard you say a couple of things. One, the sports facility, maybe. Uh, the sports facility, maybe the pool came way over. Um, and you know, we have actuals on that, yet we were still, uh, we didn't forecast. Accurately for usage. Um, the high school, new building, the engineers told us something, we relied on them, we still missed. Uh, you know, we knew all along that the geothermal wasn't gonna be coming online for Driscoll, but yet we still under budgeted. And we've got Pierce coming at some point. Um, again, I don't, I'm I'm not asking for an answer right now, but I think building in. Um, some, some risk. You know, some money to cover the risk of unknowns. We don't know how a geothermal uh, building is gonna perform. We don't know if the electricity is gonna be way over than what we expected or what. Um, and so until we get a handle on that, I do think it would be be smart to build in the cushions that you're talking about.
Sure, I just wanna throw out there that um. You know, with the phys ed co- phys ed pool complex, their terms are twice what they were last year, right? So there's clearly an operational change that we, you know, was not communicated up to us when when we're thinking about what the utility budget is. And I I think that's a very good point, um, that, you know, it's almost like um. Either at the, when we talk about the bid, the building apartment budget with select board or with AC. And we talk about the factors that are being considered within the utility budget, you know, at least. Um, so that they're on the table, and if anybody has any others, they can be raised, you know. Um, I do think that. It's a good point. Charlie, I don't know if you wanna add something, try to say.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to add to that. So of the high school, just for clarification, um, twenty-two Tappan Street. One of the newer buildings that came online, that is the building that we're having problems with the HVAC system. And I believe it's using too much energy. And the engineer, the original design engineer has been working with the town to try to correct it. But at this point, it's it's not going anywhere. Town council's involved, and I'm hiring another firm to review the entire design. If we used. The correct numbers, we wouldn't be in the situation we are now, partially on that. On the second part. There's a little bit of confusion about the high school, phys ed, um, and high school. So, just so that you know. The Unified Arts Building has a section of it called the Heating and Lighting Plant, and that's a centralized heating plant. There are multiple boilers in there that provide heat to all the buildings underground through piping. The change that happened last year versus this year is is a brand-new heating and lighting plant with all new boilers. All part of the design. So my assumption is those boilers are running differently than the old boilers were. I need to bring in the engineer again and find out what the changes were. We also had some issues with gas meters that we thought we had resolved. So it's more than one thing, um. That adds up to this high cost at the high school. That's all.
Okay, anything else? Any other questions? Comments? Okay, um, then I move approval of the reserve fund transfer.
Um, I didn't get a chance to talk about library at all. Um, Pierre Green, do you want me to, somebody to just mention anything there? It's essentially similar reasons. Some increase in cost across the board and some increase in use, but it's a much smaller number, obviously.
Okay, any other?
I just didn't get to bring it up, so I thought I'd throw that out there.
Okay, so I move approval of the uh, reserve fund transfer. Oh, in favor, please indicate by saying aye, Mr. Vascoya.
Aye.
Is Ashen Azee?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Sandman?
Aye.
Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very interesting issue that we have. Okay, next, we have uh, uh, board and commission's interviews. Uh, we have a candidate for the planning board, Carrie Yun. Um, I see she's here. Ms. Yun, how are you doing? Uh, Miss Fields, could you? Bring Ms. Yun in?
He's just been promoted co-panelist.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Ms. Yun.
Hello, good evening.
So uh, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you are interested in uh, being appointed to the planning board. Um, and you know, what what thoughts you have for uh, acting as a member of the planning board?
Um. Sure. I was asked to um, give you an introduction to myself and um. I am an architect. I've been an architect for the last almost thirty years. And twenty-five of those years, I've been working with Softy Architects in. In uh, Somerville. I don't know if you know the firm. But it is a large-scale international firm with lots of travel and international work. Um, after twenty-five years there, I decided that I wanted a change in my profession. And uh, wanted to focus on more local work and um. And part of that was giving back to the community. And 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 participating in in um, more philanthropic efforts. And and having more time to be able to spend with uh, family and friends. Um, so I've been looking, living in Brookline for the last eight years. Uh, before that, I was living in Cambridge for the last twenty. And um. I consider this my home, and I am interested in um. Becoming more involved in in um, my community and. Taking advantage of my knowledge in architecture. It seems most appropriate to uh. To do that by uh, participating in in. Uh, planning board as it was. To start.
Good, thank you. So um. In your resume uh, or materials, you mentioned that you left uh, Safdie. Is that how you pronounce it? Safdie?
Yep, Safdie.
Uh, architects uh, to pursue a private practice, focusing on high-end residential projects.
That would be nice, yeah, yeah.
Okay, talk to me about that in terms of uh, uh, your, what what? Does that conflict with or or help the goals of the uh, planning board, which has as one of its goals? Affordable housing. Um, and I just, that's an open-ended question.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, answered whatever way you think is appropriate.
I would say, like, if you were to ask me, like, as far as. The type of architecture that would um. Probably connect most to my passion, I would say it would be high-end architecture. Just because um, I have been spending a lot of time doing. High-end architecture in general. Um, but that doesn't mean that I'm not interested in um, affordable housing and. Housing in general and what that means to the community. Um. I I feel that I have a lot of experience in and um. In. Residential in general and um. When when you, when you say high-end. Um. It is something that interests me, but it's not my only interest in architecture.
Okay, um, there's Ashen Azee, I think, was next.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for applying. Um. Uh, I I think my line of questioning is somewhat similar, which is have you been um, to any of the planning board meetings? Uh, have you been following everything with the MBTCA? Uh, and what are your kind of general, you don't have to show your cards, but what are your general thoughts on what's happening with that? In the town?
So I do not know about the. Uh, what you had just said, the N.
MBTCA.
MBTCA. Um, I was listening a little bit on the conversation in this meeting. I have sat in on um, a board meeting, a planning board meeting. Um. Uh, just to familiarize myself with that, and I met the 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 board members that were present at that meeting. Um, yes.
Hey, Mr. Sandman?
Um, I have a slightly irrelevant question, I'm afraid. Uh, but I'm very interested in where you are or with, I assume that's a photograph of the the in your back, in the background. Uh, or is, uh, but I'm interested in where that, where that is. It's very interesting space.
Apologize, because I can, I can't hear you very well, the the volume.
The the, there's a, the background that you're using for your uh, Zoom call. Where is that?
That is uh, the Telfair Museum and or the Jepson Center for the Arts Museum in Savannah, Georgia. That was one of the projects I had done uh, early in my career, probably finished. That one finished in two thousand and six, um. But it was what, it's one close to my heart, because it was some, one of my very early projects and. Something that I spent a lot of time on. So if you're in Savannah, Georgia, it's a, it's a nice place to visit.
Um, Mr. Warren?
I thank you, um, Ms. Yun, thank you for your uh, interest and application to to the planning board. Um, this may be related to the MBTACA question, similar type of questions. Our planning board, I think, has a number of architects on it. Uh, and very few planners. And we, it's a planning board, uh, and we, you know, we, we are uh. In the process of trying to become compliant with the MBTA Communities Act. I would encourage you to research that and find more. But we also um, will be initiating a a comprehensive planning process. To update um, our master comprehensive plan for the town and zoning reform. And I just, it would be helpful to understand your thoughts on how. The role of the planning board as an architect and how you see it intersecting with. With broader planning activities, land use planning activities for the town.
Um. The planning board, as you know, as I see it, is is not just. Architecture and in a way, it's it's really not architecture at all. It really is urban design and planning, because as. Somebody who's dealing with, um, you know. Uh, as as a representative of the city. You know, the the role of an architect and and um. Is a very subjective thing, whereas planning and the regulations kind of around that are very regulated, not that. Judgment and and um, good, good design isn't incorporated into that. But there is like a um, a level of. Of um. Uh. Objectivity that's taken away by the nature of planning and 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 so forth. Um, I have. I don't know if you know the work a lot, but I have been involved in a lot of um. Planning projects, but not necessarily just building design, which deals with um. You know, uh, multiple uses, deals with traffic, deals with sustainability. Deals with a lot of different things that affect not just. The building itself, but the community and the environment that it affects. Um. And I do apologize, I I have not spent a lot of time in the past, um, staying up. And and involved in, you know, the the events that have been happening in Brookline. But that was like, the intent here is to to get more involved and participate more.
Sure, and I, Bernard, if I may, just a quick follow-up, because she she has now really piqued my interest. Um, so the. If you could give an example. Of the work that you've done. So you've said you've worked with, you know, doing some more planning projects where it's not just. The aesthetics of the building, which frankly, we spend far too much time on, uh, and less time on how. You know, good uh, urban design fits into the needs of a sustainable community. Could you just give an example of? Um, you know, a a concept or something that you've worked on related to that?
Um, yeah, so. The practice that I was involved in, um. A lot of the projects that we have been doing recently or had been doing recently have been. Um, mega-scale or or large-scale projects. Um. Many of which are unrealized, because a lot of these tend to be, um. You know, a lot of. Uh. Well-wishing by, you know, wealthy donors or wealthy or or communities. And trying to plan out um, towns and and so forth that. Take a lot of effort to actually get built. Um. So for example, I would say that there was a project in Saudi Arabia that I had spent. Um. Um, well over a year working on, which was not a mixed-use complex of. Creating an entire community within the desert. Um, that isn't the only one. There was, there was a a planning for um. Residential and commercial project in in um. In Budapest, that was. Uh, very large as well. Um, and I would say the one that was probably. Uh, the only one that was. The largest one that was actually built was the Ravel City Chongqing in China that was completed. A few years back, and that was thirteen million square feet. Um, mixed-use complex that included. Um, uh, transportation, retail, commercial, residential. Um, community spaces. Uh, and so forth. So there were a lot of considerations that went into a project of that scale and size. And not just whether or not, you know, what the kitchens look like, or you know, all of the, the kind of. More aesthetic parts of architecture.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we will be uh, deciding on appointments to the planning board at a future meeting, but we appreciate your. Uh, presentation. I also might mention to the select board members and the public. Uh, in your materials, there are a number of um. Um, pictures of projects that either in in the conceptual phrase phase or were actually completed. Uh, some of which um, may raise questions about. Um, your thoughts on uh, density of uh, development, housing development? In in a context that may not be relevant to Brookline, but may uh, suggest some interesting questions, so. Uh, I found, I found those interesting. I'm sure other people would too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, where are we? Next, ARPA reallocation, question of approving the reallocation of ARPA funds. Uh, American Recovery um, Plan Act. To fund wage agreements with the town unions. Uh, Mr. Carrier, are you gonna? Outline that or?
Sure, uh, there's a memo in your, memo in your packet, uh, indicating the, uh, what we're gonna do on this front, uh, or recommending you do on this front, uh, under item eight. Um, as we previously discussed, uh, to fund the one-time costs for the union retroactive payments. We recommend taking some of the funds that are available and unused at a certain ARPA projects. And reallocating them to wage for wage expenditures. Um, the utility debt relief account, that project was really budgeted for six hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. We now believe it will cost significantly less. So we can move three hundred and twelve thousand and change out of that. Premium pay is just over a hundred thousand dollars left over in it after a six million dollar project, so that project was effectively budgeted, and we're very grateful that that turned out the way it did. Um, we have some money left over from COVID nineteen test kits, COVID nineteen testing. And part of the business vaccine mandate process, uh, translation services and special supplies, uh, we have money left over in those, uh, for the, from those projects. That totals six hundred and three thousand, three hundred dollars and seventy-eight cents that we recommend trans, that you recommend, uh. Um. Re-alocating uh, from your ARPA projects towards wage expenditures.
Okay, uh, can I ask whether other board members have seen the memo? Because I went to OneDrive and it's not there.
I did see it in the packet. It came in a little bit later, I think.
Okay.
I did not, I looked in the online packet this morning and I looked yesterday, so it's in the back now.
It was, it was a late, it was a late addition, yes.
Um, I I I can't imagine there's any uh, real questions that um, it would be answered by looking at it, so. If anyone has any questions, um. Please raise them.
I I'm.
Yes, Mr. Ashen Azee.
John was first, though, I think. Sorry.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see your hand.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, well, the question I have is about the uh. Reallocation to uh. What is the, what is the phrase that's being used for it?
Wage expenditure.
Can you tell us a little bit more about that?
That's just the kind of catch-all phrase that we use for this. It's the same thing we use for premium pay, actually. We want to be able to ensure that we are. Utilizing that for any sort of wage expenditures that may come up. In this instance, it's all gonna go to retroactive payment for the um, union contracts that were just approved by town meeting.
Okay, um. And and uh, does that count as, um. Trying to remember all the various categories that we had that, you know, ARPA funds were to be. So put within.
If we can, if we can be creative about it, we might be able to find some way of framing it as a premium pay or retention incentive, but most likely it's gonna be um, uh, revenue replacement.
Revenue, that's the one I was thinking of.
We still, we are fortunate that we have, still have a pretty significant amount of revenue replacement funds available to us, um.
And and uh. Ju- just for the public who may be asking this question, we're not gonna run into any problems like the state.
No.
Okay.
No.
I I didn't think so, but I'm sure someone out there is gonna ask that.
You should be okay on that front.
Uh, any other questions, uh, Miriam?
I, I was just gonna say.
This Ashkenazi. See it.
I really don't care.
Yeah, I know, but I'm trying to practice, okay?
Um, uh, so looking at, at the memo, which is easy to see, um, it is in the updated packet. Thank you, Devin, for the link. Um, I just want to say in terms of the public health stuff, uh, you know, I don't have any, as someone who's kind of been deep in the weeds with the ARPA, I don't have any um, reservations with these reallocations. And they're frankly, they're, they're relatively small amounts when we're looking at the overall buckets. So I really don't, I don't see this being any issues.
Okay. Um. Okay, I move approval of uh, the ARPA reallocation. Um, as uh, was discussed, please, and uh, please indicate um, by saying aye, your agreement. Um, Mr. Van Skoyak?
Aye.
Um, there's Ashkenazi.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Sandman?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Warren?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you. Hey, senior property tax exemption discussion and possible vote on the senior means-tested property tax exemption. And by the way, um, Ms. Ashkenazi uh, indicated that she needs to leave by six fifteen, so I, I mean, we can continue our meeting after she leaves, but I would like to move along as, as quick as possible. And we also had to go to town meeting, which is, which is not down the hall.
I'm already here.
Okay, well. Okay.
All for the rest of us.
Yeah, right. Okay, uh, Mr. Heineman, are you gonna uh, present?
I can take it briefly and then Rashid and I can, can do it together as a team. So, thank you Chair Green. Uh, so Lincoln Heineman, the Town's Finance Director, and with me, as you mentioned, is our Chief Assessor, Rashid Belhassin. Uh, just as a very quick uh, reminder as to what this issue is. So, town meeting passed in November twenty twenty, a um, a means-tested uh, senior citizen tax exemption based on various criteria. The state legisla-, it needed approval from the state legislature. That approval occurred at the close of uh, of December twenty twenty-two and was signed by the governor in January. Um, this past January. So what the uh, the only thing under consideration by the town in general and specifically you, the select board, um, is what, if any, the asset limit will be. Um, and, and what is, what is considered excessive assets for the purposes, for the purpose of this exemption. So if you recall on uh, May sixteenth, the last time that the board met on this matter, um, the Board of Assessors did make a recommendation for a, a lower amount for that exemption. Um, the uh, the board members requested that uh, that staff go back and seek more input from several folks in the senior community. Uh, we've done that. Uh, the, there was a meeting of um, B-CAM, uh, Brookline Community Aging, uh, uh, sorry, Network. And, and, and there was a feedback received there. Uh, this past Thursday, uh, the Council on Aging was able to meet on this matter and receive some feedback there. And there've also been some uh, individual conversations with some members of the community, uh, Susan Grunoff and Betsy Pollock, who have particular interest in this matter and are obviously senior advocates. So the, the result of that feedback coming back from um, those informal and formal discussions, while the cap fall, for example, the Council on Aging didn't take a formal vote to uh, recommend to you, the, the select board, what the asset limit might be. I think the, it was pretty clear that the consensus um, from hearing from various of these uh, uh, you know, of these stakeholders in the senior community was that uh, there was that they would prefer a higher asset limit. Uh, and what had been discussed most frequently was the uh, subbury asset limits. Well, that's not formal. Uh, again, as a reminder, that's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, not including the primary domicile. Um, so that, that was certainly, I would say, the consensus, you know, while again, no formal vote, the consensus from members of the community uh, were seeking feedback was around that number. Um, and if I could also, you, you'll see in your packet, but I can, we can put it up on the screen and um, receive, you know, further feedback. But um, Mr. Van Skoyak had asked for uh, some particular data on statutory exemptions, on the existing exemptions, not the Brookline specific ones, but the ones in general in state law granted in fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Um, so that is a total of ninety-two exemptions across the six categories of state exemptions, not Brookline-specific. In addition, there were nine deferrals. So that's not having, that's having taxes delayed until the, the property for senior, qualifying senior, until the property changes ownership. Um, so happy to put that up on the screen if that's desired. And obviously Rashid and I are both here to answer any questions and seek a vote from the board tonight so that um, we can get this process in place, finalize the forms and have them out um, so that seniors may apply for this exemption throughout July and August.
Okay, let, let me ask a quick question first. You, you have a list of things that are included in the asset list. I mean, personal residence is not. Um, and I think it'd be helpful for people to understand what it means to be uh, middle-class, is what we're targeting. Um, by, in, by showing, you know, what, what, what assets are included. I assume pension and, and uh, you know, 401Ks and things like that are included, so.
Right. So the, so the standard, so the, the, the standard pieces are cash, investments, you know, liquid investments, anything that's not the primary domicile. Um, you know, any second home or, or land, you know, wha- whatever the case may be. And, you know, o- other tangible things that are easily identified as to what uh, the value is, for example, boat. Um, but Rashid, am I missing anything there?
No, that's, that's uh, you summed it up well. Um, it's mostly financial, um, any other real estate owned uh, other than the domicile, the main domicile. And again, any uh, uh, personal property that includes, you know, uh, personal property that's easy to identify, like uh, cars and boats and, and what have you. Um, when I say cars and, and boats is easy to identify because we can identify them through excise tax and, and that, and that is easy to track. Uh, but mostly, uh, mostly financial and other real estate.
Okay, so um, I don't know who was first. Uh, uh, Mr. Warren?
I think I was first. Um, thank you, Chair Green. Am I unmuted?
Yes.
I am unmuted. Thank you. Uh, first, I wanna uh, thank you both, um, Lincoln Rashid, for engaging with our aging community. I think um, that was really important uh, to, to have those conversations. And I really do appreciate you, you having them. What's unclear to me is, are you, are you recommending the seven fifty at this point? It wasn't clear to me. The box was blank in the chart, so.
Well, we made, the, the recommendation we made in our last meeting uh, was um, um, was um, a different amount, uh, but the, the chart uh, was less blank because it's, it's uh, we're waiting for a number from you, basically. We are recommending your vote.
Okay, so, so based, so based on your interactions with the three, I think the Council on Aging, Brookline Can, and then some individual conversations uh, with senior advocates, it sounds like they were giving you feedback that seven fifty was really, and this is, sounds like this is a pilot, right? Two, seven fifty was uh, the number that, that seemed to be the consensus number feedback from the community. Uh, per, you know, personally, from my standpoint, um, I, I, I would agree with that. When I look at a cap of a hundred and ten for a, a, an individual, and I think it's one fifty for uh, for um, you know, for a couple, um, you know, that, that's not a lot of money. Um, and you're actually, you know, if we use those numbers, you're gonna start tapping into um, you know, lifetime savings to pay real estate taxes, and that money's gonna go very, very quickly. Um, you know, uh, from the numbers that you're showing, I think in response to Mr. Van Skoyak's request uh, for information, we're not getting a huge run on these requests, right? Um, so these really are people that are in, in the highest need uh, for, for support uh, within our community. So I would encourage and support the, the seven hundred and fifty thousand uh, uh, asset, not including the domicile, primary domicile. Thank you.
Uh, I think Ms. Ashkenazi was next.
Thank you. Um, so I, I, I appreciate um, Mr. Warren's comments, but I, I fall on the other end of the spectrum. I think we have to be very thoughtful here, that we are not um, you know, if somebody owns a four million dollar house, where do they land on this? Are we giving them a tax exemption? I'm not really okay with that, frankly. Like, so I would like, I could get behind the subbury exemption if the assets included their primary residence. Because the other thing we do that Subbury doesn't do is we give a residential exemption. So now they get a residential, residential exemption, they get this tax exemption, and their primary residence is not included in their assets. So I feel like one of these three things has to change. Uh, you know, I, I, I agree it's a pilot and, and I, I still, and I think it's really important to support our seniors. But at the same time, of course, I would imagine, I would, if somebody asked me if I wanted a bigger exemption, I would say, yes, of course, give me the biggest exemption you can. I think that's normal, right? We, that's what we all want. But I think we have to balance what is appropriate. I don't want to give an exemption to somebody who lives in a four or five million dollar house. So I really think those asset, that primary residence needs to be included.
Guidelines are million, I think, on assessed value.
Wait, wait, hold on, hold on, hold on. Are you finished?
I am, thank you. I appreciate that, Bernard.
Okay, did you have a follow-up comment, uh, Mr. Warren?
I just, uh, I maybe just to ask a question, I, it seemed like the, there's a million dollar cap or something uh, for assessed value, is that correct?
Yes, that is the, that is the maximum value that your uh, uh, the, the value has to be under that to qualify for this exemption. It has to be under a million seventy-six.
But that, that's without, but that's without your house in there, right?
That is your house.
Well, so maybe that's your house, yes. So then, then, then why? So I, I guess what I'm saying is, you don't get all of it, right? You don't get the house, you don't get the residential exemption, and you get the senior exemption. So if you're living in a multimillion dollar house, then you're getting the residential exception, exemption. Maybe you shouldn't be getting the mean tested senior exemption.
Well, I think if you, if you live, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I'm, I, I'm trying to, I'm trying, what I want us to think about is who this is actually meant for.
So, so.
For every senior living in Brookline.
If you live in a four million dollar house, you get up to a million dollars in that exemption. But the three million dollars left is gonna go into calculating your assets. Is, is that correct?
I, I don't, I don't think so. If that's the case, then great. But the way it looks now, when I look at this um, Excel, no. So please, please correct me if I'm wrong.
Definitely correct me if I'm wrong. Mr. Van Skoyak?
Yes, my, my, yes. Uh, if your value is over a million seventy-six, you would not qualify for this exemption anyhow. Um, the maximum value that you're, that you can uh, to qualify is a million seventy-six. If your home is a million eighty, you would not qualify for this exemption.
Okay, but so clear, so can you clea- clarify something for me then? So then your primary residence is included in your assets?
Well, that is, that is not, that is not.
Okay.
The, the, the law, actually, the law does exclude your domicile from, from the assets.
Okay, Mr. Van Skoyak, you.
Oh, wait. I'm really confused still.
Can I try and approach it quickly, for, very quickly, from, from, from just, just, just to try and make it clear? If your home, it, it, by law, right, this, this is not, this is in the law that was passed by the legislature. If your home is valued in fiscal year twenty twenty-four at above one million seventy-six thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars, you are not eligible for this exemption by law. If it is below that, you may be eligible based on the various other criteria. What, what's, what's under, what, what the board in your decision, based on the um, uh, based, ba- based on the, the, what your determination is on of excess assets, that's the, 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 the subbury model is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in assets, not including your, your primary domicile. But that doesn't have anything directly to do with the one million seventy-six thousand. I hope that's clear.
As long, uh, Mr. Van Skoyak?
Thank you very much. Um, so a few questions a- and then a comment. And the questions, uh, I'm gonna direct to Mr. Heineman. Uh, but if he wishes to throw them to Mr. Belshing, that's fine. Um, all right, so we made clear that uh, if you have a, a, a house that is worth more than a million seventy-six, you can't qualify. Um, and we're talking about whether you should be disqualified if you have personal assets other than your house for more than seventy-five, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I- is there a limit on what an individual can receive in a, you know, tax um, rebate um, in a given year?
There is. I'll, I'll let Rashid answer that, for instance.
Yes, uh, that is, that is based, um, uh, see, the exemption, before you get the exemption, there's certain exclusion to the, to the exemption. So based on income, depending on your, what your income is. So the ten percent of the income is excluded for this exemption. So the higher the income, the lowest the exemption would be. And uh, obviously by first line, uh, all right. So it's uh, so it's, it, it depends on the, the income. The, that the amount of the exemption you receive is based on how the income, what the income level is.
And, and is there, is there a cap on what an individual can receive?
Well, there is a cap, there is, there is not, there is a cap of the total amount to be granted as, as a whole. Uh, it's a quarter percent of uh, of the residential tax levy. There is a cap there. But the amount of the exemption is, is uh, the, the amount exemption to be received depending on your income.
Okay.
Uh, and of course, of the assessed value, obviously.
So um, to your, to the best of your knowledge, and again, e- either Mr. Heineman or Mr. Belshing, um, to the best of your knowledge, if we go with the million seventy-six threshold for how much you can have in a, in a ha- assets in a house, and if we go with a seven hundred and fifty thousand for how much you can have in non-residential assets, um, h- how, what's your best guess as to how many people will qualify? And also your best guess as to what the average distribution would be in terms of the, the rebate per qualified applicant?
Well, let me give you an example. The uh, the, the uh, the highest tax bill that could qualify for this exemption, uh, it's based on the million seventy-six and it's, it's seven thousand five hundred and forty-six. That is the highest tax bill that could potentially qualify for that exemption.
Yeah.
Anything above that would not qualify. By the way, let me correct one thing I said. There is a cap on how much exemption that you can def, you can get up to fifty percent of your tax bill exempted. I forgot that detail, but that, that is a cap. Um, but um, uh, there um, the, uh, I don't have a, a exact number, um, what, how many, if, any will qualify, well, how many? Um, but we're expecting, uh, we're not expecting a high number, um, based on uh, you know, based on these restrictions that we have. Uh, but again, I don't have a number to consider uh, for tonight.
One last follow-up and then I promise I'm done. Um, so uh, i- i- if we don't expect there to be a flood of applicants with the million seventy-six and the seven hundred and fifty thousand, wouldn't it be um, true that the number of applicants we get with a threshold of a hundred and ten thousand would be even much less than that? In other words, what, I'm just trying to figure out why the initial recommendation from, from you folks was a hundred and ten thousand. If it doesn't sound like we're going to get all that many qualified applicants even at seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, what we did with the uh, the hundred and ten, hundred and fifty-two, we basically took the existing exemption, uh, senior exemption, forty-one, clause forty-one C, the asset limits for that, and basically doubled them. Uh, we, we thought we, you know, would, would trigger more applicants, we'll bring in more applicants for the exemption. Um, but, but ultimately, the decision is up to the select board to determine that. Um, we wanted to start with a base, and we, the forty-one C made sense to double those amounts. to double those amounts because we, we only get about ten exemptions a year. We figured if we double the assets, we may get a few more. But again, the restriction with the assessed value uh is, 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 I think, the primary restriction for this exemption is the, the median value, which is the million seventy six. Um, uh, once that uh is considered, uh, that will disqualify uh major, you know, a lot.
Yeah.
Quite a few.
And Mr. Heineman, did you add?
I, 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 I just wanted to um reiterate a little bit, ju- just, just make, just to reclarify. The million seventy six thousand cap, that is set in the law. So there's no decision on that because that is what the law specifies with respect to the median of house, of, of uh condominiums and uh single family homes. And, and so that's set, it's just the, the asset limit. A- and the only other quick thing I think I, I just wanted to add is, you know, I think the, the assessors um made the decision based, uh, made their recommendation based on looking at many of the other nine municipalities that have this residential exemption and many um have it significantly below the seven hundred and fifty thousand. I think that went into their, to their recommendation. But of course, again, it's the select boards, um, it's, it's the select board's decision and, you know, there's, there's no wrong answer here. I think, I think that's just sort of the reasoning um behind why the assessors were originally thinking that. And then just very briefly to Mr. Vince Skoyak's question. Uh, we really don't know how many um, how many applications there are going to be. I agree with Rashid that there won't be very many. But again, it's based on income information that we simply don't know. We've never collected it. We don't know. Um, but I agree that, uh, you know, I, I don't think we're going to have a flood, but after one year's worth of data, we'll, we'll know, we'll have some more data.
Okay, uh, before we uh vote on that amount, uh, Mr. Sandman and.
My hand has been up, Bernard.
Yeah, I know. I'm falling on you.
All right.
Could you speak closer to your mic? We can.
Yeah, sure. Sorry. Um, so uh, I'm in desperate need of a spreadsheet uh to understand what, what, uh, what, what the consequences of setting different levels are. And I can, and as, from that last answer, it appears that you really can't provide anything that's that's definitive because you don't know what the level of applications is going to be with a hundred and ten thousand exemption or two hundred and fifty thousand dollar exemption, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar exemption. Um, and that's problematic. I mean, how do we assess what it's going to cost the town uh if we don't have some sense of that?
So, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, so the level, the maximum amount is set in the law. Um, so, so we know the absolute maximum. Uh, I'm sorry, it's point two five percent.
It's point two five percent, which amounts based on the fiscal year twenty three tax levy, residential tax levy, it amounts to five hundred and eighty seven thousand.
So that is the absolute maximum of all of these.
This is why I could use a spreadsheet, some, or something that is, you know, a piece of paper that, that explains all of this. Uh, because you're, um, quite honestly, uh, we're getting sort of uh this piecemeal uh and, and, and I'm having difficulty with it.
And so we can, we can put up the charts again if it's helpful, um, that
Yeah.
that Rashid uh put together for the last meeting and.
Yeah, yeah, that was helpful, right? It just didn't, I, it's just that uh we don't have, at least I don't have a total recall of that.
Okay, so what, what do you, what does the board want to do? I mean, what, review the charts again? Okay, Mr. Warren, why don't you?
Um, so first, I think Mike asked, first, this is a complicated uh subject and I, I appreciate that. Um, it, it does feel trickle. It does feel trickle to me sometimes. Um, I've had some time to read the material. Um, but the, the, a quick question I have to follow up on what Mike was asking. So the, the top end risk for the town is about a half a million dollars. Where does that happen? Where does that half a million dollars get funded from? Is that to other taxpayers or is it operating with you?
Yes, uh, so, uh, so that, that is a part, it will be presented to you during the classification hearing. It will be uh basically, uh, it shifted towards other residential property. So it comes out of the, uh, it, it's part of the process of setting the tax rate. So on top of the residential exemption, we'll have that exemption uh to be factored in and, and then vote for the residential tax rate and commercial tax and the, and the shift. So it will be the end of the year. And that's why the filing should be done now to give us enough time to process and determine what the amount to be granted for the end of the year. And that will be taken uh, would be part of the presentation. But it is funded through, uh, just like a residential exemption, it's, it's shifted toward other residents.
Uh, you gave a percentage of the levy that is the amount that is ma- maximum amount you can uh give in this uh exemption. What, what was that percentage and how much did that result in?
It's point twenty five, quarter percent, and it uh, it uh, the, based on the twenty three tax levy of two hundred and eighty one million, it's five hundred and eighty seven thousand.
Okay, so, so that, that's what it would cost us.
Yes, for the first year, but uh it could increase up to one percent. That's what in the law, provided in the law, between a quarter percent to one percent, maximum one percent.
And, and that decision is made annually by the board in subsequent years. So it's not a decision for you now. But it's a, a, according to the law, next year you'd have a decision about, does it remain point two five percent of the residential levy or point five or one percent maximum?
Okay, um, who is, uh, who is next? Said, uh, Mr. Skoyak, you have a quick question now. We're about to lose um, is Ashkenazi and
Yes.
we're getting close to town meeting.
Uh, yes, uh, my colleague, Mr. Sandman is smarter than me in most, most matters. Um, this, I don't need the spreadsheet. He may need the spreadsheet, but I don't need the spreadsheet. Um, I, I feel like I grasped this. I would like to, I, you know, I think we're, we probably can go ahead with a vote tonight. Um, I, I want to uh just make clear my, my personal preference in, in this matter. Um, and that's all it is, personal preference. I don't think this should be a windfall for anybody. Um, a- and I'm sorry to say that, you know, knowing that there are some ve- very qualified um older adults out there who, um, you know, drastically need, maybe they really need a windfall, you know, when it comes to their, their taxes. But um, given that we're talking about five hundred some odd thousand dollars, you could use that five hundred thousand dollars to give a thousand dollars to a hundred um tax, taxpayers. Um, I think that would be, excuse me, I'll, I'll get it straight eventually.
A thousand dollars.
You can use five hundred dollars to a thousand taxpayers, a thousand dollars to, to five hundred taxpayers. You could give um, um, you know, a, a smaller amount to, to, to some two hundred and fifty taxpayers. You could give um five thousand dollars to a hundred taxpayers. I, I don't want to see us giving five thousand dollars to any individual taxpayer of this money. I think that is a windfall. I, I don't think that's why these programs exist. Um, these programs exist to give a little bit of relief to um as many people as possible who are stressed in paying their taxes. But given that it is, does not require any repayment, um, and, and it comes out of the um incomes of other taxpayers, um, some of whom uh might not qualify, but you know, might be just as needy. And also it indirectly comes out of the pockets of renters. Um, I think we've got to be careful with programs like this and not let them become windfall amounts for, for individuals. And so I, I hope however these numbers shake out that when it comes to decisions on how much to give out, there'll be some kind of a limit such as a thousand dollars per individual taxpayer set.
Yeah, I might, may I make one more uh comment that I think we forgot to mention this last meeting is uh when this started, I think they, they meant to encourage the uh, the filing for the tax deferral. And uh, in fact, this law provides that if the person uh qualifies for the tax deferral, would not qualify for this exemption. So this was meant to encourage tax deferral filing. And just wanted to add that, I think we forgot to mention it uh during the first presentation.
Okay.
So it is a requirement.
Okay, Mr. Warren, do you have a?
I, I just wanted, I just wanted to make just a brief, I, I don't have a, 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 a question, Bernard. I just want to make a quick comment because I'd like, really like to put this into context because I'm hearing some, some stuff that I just really absolutely disagree with. Um, you know, this, this was a program that went through an extensive period uh of study uh by a committee. It was brought to town meeting, town meeting approved it overwhelmingly. It went to the attorney general, the attorney general approved it. We're now talking about the details of the implementation and there's only one number that we currently have control of. It's the seven hundred and fifty thousand. Um, you know, I did benefit from months of on the, of being on the campaign and talking to hundreds and hundreds of people. Many of them were seniors and they were horrified at the prospect of not being able to stay within Brookline. Um, that was before the Pierce vote passed. Um, you know, th- this is not a run on the bank from seniors who are going to go be sitting down on the beach, their beach chair in Florida at their second home drinking margaritas. These are people that, look at the income restrictions, it's sixty thousand dollars, uh eighty thousand dollars for a married couple, I think. You know, this is not a huge uh, uh, wealthy group of people that are coming and feeding off the other taxpayers. It's actually kind of offensive to hear that. Um, these are individuals that have been in the town for ten years. They've dedicated, uh, contributed, raised their kids here, contributed to the schools and volunteered. And now we're trying to help them age in place and I think it's very reasonable. There's a, there's a cap on it. Our, our maximum risk is five hundred thousand. It's spread throughout the rest of the levy. Uh, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a rounding error for most tax bills. I'm in favor.
Okay, is uh the board ready to vote on this or do you want to wait for, I don't know, spreadsheets or whatever?
I'm ready to vote.
Okay, I, I don't see any objection to voting. Uh, I'd like, I'd like to um propose that the uh seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar amount that uh was proposed or came out of the uh discussions uh which would not um allow anyone with a house in, in excess of one point seven six million dollars to participate uh be the amount that we recommend. Uh, on favor?
Second.
Indicate by saying aye. Um, let's see, Mr. Vince Skoyak?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Is Ashkenazi? I think she, I think we lost them. Uh, Mr. Sandman?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm here.
Yeah.
Trying to do five thousand things at once.
Yeah.
Um, aye.
Okay, uh, Mr. Sandman?
abstain.
Okay, abstain. Let's see, who else is there? Mr. Warren?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, yes, aye.
Um, and Chair votes yes. Okay, thank you. Let's move on. Okay, we, it's six twenty two and we have uh item ten, select board meeting policies and procedures. Um, and then we have select board meeting schedule and then warrant articles. So we're getting kind of tight here. Um, I don't know how you, what, what do people want to do? So both me, um, Mr. Sandman and uh Vince Skoyak circulated uh some materials to uh the select board on this issue. Um, I see Ms. Fields is here, looks like she wants to talk.
I'll defer to the town administrator.
Pardon me?
I will defer to the town administrator.
Uh, Mr. Carey?
My recommendation to you would be that, given that you're going to talk about HR policies next week anyway, you might defer the select board policies and procedures, defer the schedule. You do have one warrant article that was very late breaking to think about. The advisory committee submitted supplemental language on STM one. Um, that was, that was posted today. Uh, so I apologize to the petitioners, but the petitioners are aware that that was a late breaking uh advisory committee report that came out modifying the language somewhat. Um, it's my understanding uh that petitioners are in favor of this language. Uh, so it's a friendly amendment uh and that the select board would just need to, uh, if, if they agree with it, vote on the language as amended by the advisory committee, favorable action or unfavorable. You were previously unanimously in favor of this warrant article, I believe.
Okay, um, before we go there, let, let's sort of clean up this uh policies and procedures matter. Um, what I, Ms. Ashkenazi, you want to say?
I would really like to participate in that discussion and I have to.
Well, y- you'll get your, your wish. Don't worry about it. So, yeah, because of the, the lateness of, of the, the day and town meetings, et cetera. Um, what I'd like to do is for uh people to look at the material that has been circulated by the three of us, add your own thoughts or additional uh suggestions and um let's talk about it next week. Um, but uh I, I just would like to get some thoughts from other select board members or you have select board members who uh already gave comments uh on, on these issues so that we have um a good body of information to, to, to work with. That, that makes sense? Okay, um, okay, so uh let, let's, the next item is not, actually not uh warrant article, the select board meeting schedule. Why don't we talk about that next week also? Okay, I mean, that's fairly straightforward. I mean, if anyone objects to not meeting on the days that we've uh excluded, you can let me know. Um, so warrant articles, what, what uh, what, what are the changes? What are the proposals from the advisory committee on uh the, the gun warrant article?
Um, as I, they're in the, um, so they're in the packet of uh, uh, reports for night five, even though we're, we're deferring this till uh we're, the plan is currently to defer this until night six, uh, which is tomorrow, uh, to give people some time to review it. Um, so if you look on the town meeting files, unfortunately, it's not redlined within the night five supplements, but the last, the very end, the advisory committee recommendation. Um, the advisory committee, um, you know, just did some editing to, as they said, clarify ambiguous phrases. Um, and it's this, it's very similar language to what we had talked about previously, ensuring that um um, the language is, is such that uh it, when it's all separable, uh, there's no uh risk of uh if one part of it is declared unconstitutional, the other parts stand. Um, and then there's just um, um, the uh, you know, tightening up the language about um property, which should not include things like public ways, streets or sidewalks, which the town technically owns. Um, um. So that's the, um, that, that was the, uh, that was the, the, the major shift there.
Okay, so was that, was that two items or three?
I believe it was just, I, I believe it was, you know, it's the one warrant article. But are you talking about the, what items were actually changed?
What, what cha- how many changes are there?
I, I, it's difficult for me to tell because even though the, the, the additions are um, you know, it says the additions are in bold underline, but I can't tell how much of this is advisory versus how much of this is the original petition. There's no red line.
How are we supposed to deal with this? It sounds like the, the two changes you mentioned are fairly straightforward and
Yes.
but we don't know what other changes there may be. And, and I guess, I don't think that personally, I don't think that they would be such that I would uh oppose this, but I guess I'm a little uncomfortable.
Yeah.
Um, you know, with the way this has been brought to us.
No, I, I, I think in this instance, given the, given the timing on this, if the, if it's the will of the board, the board feels that way, the board, you know, can obviously say we didn't have time to review the advisory committee's recommendation to offer a formal recommendation. But if, if the subject and tenor of it is of the same as, the same language uh as the board initially voted on, the board, we believe the board would have no objection to the advisory committee's amendment.
What, what do people want to do? Yeah, Eric Paul, uh, Mr. Warren, you're muted, as are you, Mr. Sandman?
I can't vote on something I haven't seen.
Yeah.
Not clear to me. And when are we, are we meeting again before the next?
No.
No.
I, I.
So, so, yeah, look, I, I think, you know, our, our report ought to be that um, um, you know, we didn't have time to give competent um review of, of the changes, even though the changes may have been minor and um, you know, we, we will uh be ready to vote with other members of town meeting on Wednesday, when, when this comes up. Um. Okay, anyone object to that? Okay, um, any other uh warrant articles?
Okay.
Okay, good. Um, anything else on the, uh, for us to talk about tonight?
Bernard, I did, uh, I do think on our agenda was, was the wastewater uh fee schedule.
No, that, that, what I asked uh Devin to do is to provide us with that material early so that we can review and digest it because on the thirteenth, we're going to have both a hearing and a vote. Um, so, you know, usually we have hearings and then we have a week to digest the material and, and then vote. But uh for reasons that Devin will explain, uh, we can't do that this time. So um, this, this is, this is not, this is just a way of giving us the material early enough that, that we can, uh, you know, review it, understand it and ask any questions and then be ready to vote.
Can I ask a procedural question, Chair Green? So when, and I'm the newbie, so I don't know. So when this comes before us, we're going to have a public hearing and then a vote. Are we able to change it? Because I have some serious reservations about what um was put in front of me and, and our, in our packet um around um. um, around, um, uh, senior discounts in this area. So, uh, you know, I, I, I would want to make dramatic changes in what was proposed. How do I do that?
Well, I mean, you know, we, you can send your suggestions to, um, to, uh, uh, who, who is it, uh, that, that's?
I'll send it to the town administrator. I mean, I.
Yeah, we'll, we'll handle it properly. We'll, we'll make sure that any, any proposed alternations that any board member wants to make is in the, as a packet for next week.
And we can make those alterations, but we'd have to vote on them. And if we can't agree, then we're in big, deep trouble because we won't be able to pass, uh, this. And, and there is a deadline, right? So be, you know, be, um, be careful with your recommend, your suggested changes.
I'll be as careful as I can.
Okay, but, you know, be appropriate to what, what.
Yes, it is there, I mean, there's, you know, maybe, and maybe Chaz could, because I don't think I can share, but Chaz could share, distribute my questions. You know, there's, there were six abatements with an average of forty five dollars. That, that's not helping anybody, uh, frankly, with their water bills, so.
Okay, um, anything else?
I did just want to add Chair Green, um, Devon Fields, Assistant Town Administrator for Operations. I'm glad that you brought that up, select board member Warren. Uh, the members of the public who are interested can find all of that same information from your informational packet on the town's website. It is right under latest news. So folks can be reviewing that in advance of next Tuesday's public hearing. And, uh, a, a good procedural question is that, you know, like everything that comes in your packet on the Friday prior to a select board meeting, anytime you have questions or want to make edits, please send those to, uh, the town administrator and myself and we will happily route them to the appropriate department head or staff member to make sure that not only you have an answer in advance of Tuesday night, um, but you can assess, you know, the change that you can affect before the vote that happens that evening.
Super.
Okay, anything else? Seeing nothing or seeing no hands up, uh, I will end this meeting unless scamper over to the high school.